Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, November 6, 2024, meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. First item is roll call, starting with Mr. Shepherd.
Shepherd here.
Yep, present.
Cappy Yellow here.
Tessie, you're here.
Alan, present.
Also with us is Town Planner Vanessa Price and Barbara Irvine, Planning and Land Use Administrative Assistance. Tough to excuse my voice tonight, it's not cooperating. Next item is three, review and approval of minutes, starting with October 1st, 2024.
So I know at the last meeting, there was a question about adding something to the meeting minutes. Myself, as well as Barbara, listened to the meeting minutes and couldn't quite figure out where it is. There wasn't a line given or like a section of where it was, so that being said, confirm motion move minutes, I guess.
Is there a motion?
I could go back and listen to them if you will.
I'll make a motion to approve the October 1st, 2024 meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Shepherd, I.
Yep, abstain.
I'll abstain since I wasn't at this meeting.
Tessie, you're on.
Abstain, wasn't there.
Just go ahead.
Okay, wait a minute.
We don't have enough.
You don't have a quorum then?
Right.
The quorum was just, we don't know, we've already got it.
Yes. Approve meeting minutes, yes, this is official record.
Guess we'll put off the October 1st minutes till our next meeting.
Unless we would like to take another.
I have a job assignment.
Unless someone else would like to.
You're not required to be here to approve the minutes by our regulations.
Mind taking a roll call again, maybe?
All right, we have a fourth one.
I'll go for it.
Okay, thank you. Joyce and Andy.
Ron's gonna vote for it.
Yeah.
Can you jump?
Yep, thank you.
I have to vote for something I don't know.
I don't have a.
Done before, I'll do it again.
Three B, review and approval of October 15th, 2024, meeting minutes. Any questions or comments?
Just the one I've already made.
Okay.
About the missing content.
Okay. Your motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Roll call, please.
Second.
Oh, second, yep.
I'm sorry.
Ron.
Shepherd, I.
Yep, abstain.
This is the same set of minutes we're recording.
Oh.
From our last meeting minutes.
Fifteenth?
Okay, abstain, I wasn't there.
I'm okay with the fifteenth, sorry about that.
Oh, okay.
That was the other set that.
Oh, it's a great start to me.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a long meeting.
It's been a long day.
Okay, wait, do we go all around?
So, I.
I.
Change this vote.
Sure.
Okay, I.
Thank you.
You get four?
Yeah.
Next, item four, staff updates featuring the town planner.
I know we have a long agenda tonight, so I won't do anything else except for a plug for the training on the sixteenth. I only have John going. Anybody want to join us Saturday, the sixteenth? The town pays for the training. Have you already signed up?
Yes.
Okay, just give me your registration and we can get our reimbursement fee. And we also do mileage as well, so if anybody else is considered going.
I'll think about it.
Okay.
Connor was encouraging, ready to go.
Okay, great, thank you.
Item five, 5A, bond approval, requiring a vote. Could you give us some information, please?
Yes, so our subdivision standards and recommendation by the town attorney that we should accept all bonds through the planning board, I know historically you may have not done in the past, but this is the practice we're doing now, especially with the new, with our regulations. The performance bond was agreed upon between the town engineer, the applicant's engineer, as well as the town attorney. So we're just looking tonight to vote to approve the performance bond, so he can finish up his letter of credit and get moving on that.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the performance bond for 239-35-V-22-17 lots.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Shepherd, I.
Yep, I.
Cappy Yellow, I.
Tessie, right.
Alan, I.
Just go ahead. Item 5B, continuum case from October 1st, 2024, 101-52 and 53-GR-24LL, Onus Peter and Peggy Shaw. Anybody here to speak to this? Lou?
How are you?
Very well, thanks.
Should we open for public comment? Should we open for public comment? Just before we start?
Are you the first getting paid there?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Do you mind just turning on your microphone wherever you have your microphone over there?
Proceed.
The general outline is we're doing a boundary line adjustment between these two lots. Lots 101, Lot 52, and tax number 101, Lot 53. Going, we're making one lot, which is Lot 52, from 19,000, bring it up to 98,000. Taking Lot 53, making it smaller, going from 169,000 down to 91,000. Is pending state subdivision approval in that aspect.
Did you have test pits on it?
Sorry?
Lot 15, do you have test pits on lot?
Yes.
Any further questions before I'd open to public comment?
Just a general comment that it is still a non-conforming lot by the configuration and shape of it. I mean, you're, you're just barely meeting the requirements at a 75-foot setback. You're, you're, you're trying to make it conform by meeting the minimum width.
Well, but we asked for that last meeting.
I know, but compared to the triangular shape, I'm just making the comment, it's still.
I mean, it would kind of fit the batlock, the backlot category.
Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll open it to public comment. Would anybody like to speak to this? Anybody online?
If anybody online that would like to speak for or against this application, please raise your hand. I don't think anyone's on phone. I don't see any, anybody wanting to.
Okay, closing public comments. Add any additional comments to the NOD? Want to add a comment? Hearing none, is there a motion to grant the notice of decision?
Sorry, I did have one other comment.
Oh, sure.
The well radius, sir, we still putting an easement in play for the well?
I thought there was a note that.
Or did they moved it?
Yeah, yeah.
The reason I made it narrow was to fit all the other stuff.
To keep it in, okay, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right well for the right, right lot.
Can you put a road through that well where it is?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I'll make the motion to grant the notice of decision. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ron.
Can you shoot one?
Roll call, please.
Shepherd, I.
Yep, I.
Cappy Yellow, I.
Just go ahead. Thank you very much.
See you in a little bit.
Oh, no, we don't read them anymore.
We don't do that?
Nope.
I missed that, huh?
Yep. We actually had the attorney here and she agreed. Okay, next item is, second page, Bending Brook. 239-35-V-24, 117 sub amendment, request by the applicant for subdivision amendment to address construction details for road pavement on, for Pebble Court and Bending Brook subdivision. Anyone here? Thank you, hi Scott.
Scott Gold from Beals Associates. So in short, we were here for a preliminary meeting where we went into detail.
The green button, huh?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay.
We went on to detail about the pavement mix that was put down in the subdivision that was brought up by CMA. As a result, it was noted that the improvement for that would be to add two inches of top coat instead of the one and a half that's normally required. In addition, the plans had some, some statements that they wanted and some requirements as well. This in front of me here is the revised plan. The roadway cross-section has been revised to show the required two-inch now of top coat. And in addition, the notations on the right are the added requirements in dealing with the timing of road acceptance, any repairs that need to be made, and the associated requirements that the town had come up with. So I believe that's all we needed to address for this application.
Was the negative slope?
Yeah.
Negative slope requirement by the roadie.
Yeah, and that's to be dealt with in the future if needed. The developer has agreed to actually remove that section and then replace it, so excavation and everything. If you look on the bond estimate that you actually just approved, that's been accounted for within that. Yep.
And it's also just to address the board that it's on the general and subsequent conditions too, as one of the notes.
Questions, any other questions? Motion to accept the application as.
Second.
Roll call.
Shepherd, I.
Yep, I.
Cappy Yellow, I.
Tessie, you're on.
Alan, I.
Just go ahead. Going to open it to public comment. Anybody would like to speak to this? Raise your hand, come forward. Online.
Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against this application? If so, please raise your hand and put yourself off mute. I'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, announce anybody online that would like to speak for or against this application, online.
Okay, I'm closing public comment. Any additional comments for the notice of decision? Hearing none, entertain a motion to grant the notice of decision.
Second.
Roll call.
Shepherd, I.
I guess I am.
Sorry.
Shepherd, I.
Yep, I.
Cappy Yellow, I.
Tessie, you're on.
Alan, I.
Just go ahead. Okay, thank you very much. Next item, 223-26-57RC-24SR amendment. The applicant requests a subdivision amendment to change parking design and increase the parking from 44 to 72 spaces at the Ridge at Green Hill Mixed Use Site located off Signature
Again, for the record, Scott Gold from Beals Associates. To get to represent, John O'Neil, I believe is also here, the developer and owner of the property. This is in reference to the site plan actually right next door to the town hall. We came here for a preliminary review meeting to go over the proposed changes. In coloration here, the proposal is to relocate the eight approved, very large oversized parking stalls shown in orange in the paved area, and replace them with the gray area to the bottom, which is your normal standard parking stalls on the other side of the aisle of the building. This is a very minor change in nature. All of the drainage is intact and all goes to the exact same place. To illustrate that as a requirement, we had actually checked with AOT because this is an AOT project. We did write a letter and then I apologize for the delay, but I can't control DES. Apparently, some of the members are actually part-time now. We do have a letter in response from, I believe Beth Ann, from AOT stating that this does meet their threshold for a very minor adjustment. No amended permit nor drainage is required, and we can go forward with the.
We get a couple of those.
Yep. So other than that, as I said, it's very minor. I believe some of the commentary was made, I believe Mr. Chairman wanted to make sure that it met the aesthetics of the wall out in front of the subdivision. The developer has actually gone forward and installed that wall, so you should be able to see it.
Really?
Relatively good, so it does match basically the same wall as out front, so it's aesthetically pleasing.
You're gonna be using concrete tire barriers for stopping cars going over that, right?
Yeah, 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 wheel stops.
Wheel stops.
You know, those aren't as visually, we had first, we're gonna use a guard rail, but we really kind of ruined the facade of the, the building and everything, so we went with that route. In addition to that, I said, you know, everything's pretty minor. These are basically overflow spaces. The idea is the residents up top, you know, if there's somebody in the store during the day, they'll be able to actually use the, the spaces against the building at night. There was a question, I believe, from a road agent on this plan, I believe it was a road agent or a fire department, excuse me, but in regardless, they were wondering what size vehicle. By moving those spaces over to here, none of the aisles have changed, so this was already approved for a WB50, the smallest semi trucks. None of that has changed. Certainly adequate for the fire apparatus, it's not a problem, so. Other than that, as I said, if, is there any questions?
Questions, anybody, before we?
You mentioned aesthetics. Real quick, I know this is already approved, but I noticed there was a fence detail that was stockade fence going around the dumpster, I guess.
Yeah.
It seems like all the trim of the building is white.
Vinyl.
I was thinking a white vinyl fence might look better than a stockade fence. I mean, it's not gonna influence my change, but I think that would better fit the, the style of the building.
Getting a positive nod from, from the developer, the client, so I think that actually makes sense.
Okay. Of course, the other thing I'm gonna bring up is lighting. The lighting plan, the new spaces down below.
Yep.
Are there any light poles there, or how is that illuminated?
It's really just from the wall packs, and I knew you were gonna ask. It's really, they're still gonna get ambient light, it may not quite meet the requirements of the regulations for the regular parking areas, but as is, are being overflow. The only way to do that really would be to put two relatively large light poles basically at the end of two of those spaces, so you'd have these big antennae-looking things in front of the building, which we're really trying to not ruin. Again, we don't see it as a safety concern, the building itself is fairly lit up. They all enter the building via the front, so walking towards the building, it'll be even more lit up, so we really don't see it as an issue.
Yeah, I guess the problem is, Scott, the, the lighting plan doesn't show, you know, the lumen levels at the surface, so we, it's hard to say what's getting any light at all.
Yeah.
And, you know, so if it's, if it's not getting any light at all, that's a problem, it's gotta get some.
It'll get a little bit, yeah. It's, as I said, it's not gonna get the required.
There's a minimum it's gotta meet, and there's no evidence that it does, so.
So the foot candles are on there, but because the numeric candle foot, did I ever say that right? Would have been incorrect since the change. We didn't send it back to the lighting engineer, so we basically just turned it off. You can see there's plenty of light on the, on the sides and in the rear, but it's really only where the parking edge starts, where the one foot candle would stop.
Well, I will tell you, the original plan didn't meet, meet the requirements, the minimum's too low, and that's why I'm worried about these spaces not getting any light at all. I think, to me, the requirement, it meets the, you know, requirement is, there is a illumination requirement on those spaces.
Mm-hmm.
And to me, we have to have that, a safety issue. So, you know, the plan doesn't tell you what's going, normally we get, you know, the, in print, you can't see what the, what the levels are.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And so there's no evidence that those spaces are receiving any illumination at all.
Mm-hmm.
And it's gotta get some, it's gotta meet the minimum level.
Well, it is, I mean, you can tell it is illuminated via the, I mean, these are candle footprint patterns that show, that's what these cones are.
They stop before the space.
I understand there's no numeric values to them.
But those, those photometrics from the fixtures, they stop before the spaces, the circles.
Correct.
So the indication that we have is there's no light levels there.
They're less than the .5, yes.
Certainly less than that, but this says nothing.
Yeah.
So, to me, we needed an amended lighting plan that shows compliance.
Did you upgrade the lights on the building to put out more light?
I don't believe, well, you certainly check, I don't believe wall packs will go that far without keeping it a downlit scenario. We don't want it going.
Right.
Should, you know, do it 1.25. Now, last lighting thing, you said you're gonna do something with the lights after 10 o'clock? Is that what I read? Something that said that, you know, you're gonna turn down the lights after business hours. And were you gonna turn them off, or are you gonna bring them down to a lower level?
They usually, I think that's a pretty standard note we have, they usually turn down after 10:00 PM to security lighting.
Like dimmable, that goes down to a certain level?
Yeah.
Okay.
And those lots would be mostly used by the businesses, on the commercial businesses?
Well, yeah, during the day, and then the residents are, you know, obviously inside at night.
Yeah, the residents usually park in the rear, right?
No, I believe the, the actual entrances, I believe, to the units are now in front.
Oh, they are now in the front, okay.
With excess parking in the rear, towards the garage.
Okay. 7:00 is dark now.
Yep. So, I mean, if that's something the board really wants to, I can, I will go back to the landscape, excuse me, the lighting architect, engineer, and we'll have to add probably two light poles, like I said.
Now, I, I mean, as long as Vanessa's satisfied down the road, I, let it be required. And Steve, want me to look at it with you? I mean, I'm okay approving it, the subsequent addition or.
Yeah, condition. Conditions totally fine.
Yeah, you can, if the board want to entertain doing a conditions precedent, you could say to, that a new lighting plan will have to be submitted with the final plans that, or something along those lines.
Okay, with that as a.
We'll just provide the newer plan, because I already have the poll, it's the same poll I deleted, because we had a poll on the left prior, so we'll have to add two of those.
I think that's, that was set up.
First, we have to vote that the application is complete, so motion to do that. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Shepherd, I.
Cappy Yellow, I.
Tessie, you're on.
Alan, I.
Just go ahead.
Can you say in a second?
Ron. Seconded. Going to open it to public comment. Anybody would like to speak to this? Please raise your hand.
Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against this application? If so, please raise your hand and put yourself off mute. I'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, announce anybody that would like to public comment on this application.
Closing public comment. Any additional comments besides Ron's? And you're gonna, we don't have to read it anymore, so we'll just get it to you.
Yeah, I have the note on here to say to add a lighting plan that lands.
Okay. And change the fence to vinyl. And change the fence to vinyl, stockade. And there's a detail, you have stockade fence detail, you're gonna change.
Yeah, we'll change it to vinyl.
Okay, motion to grant the NOD?
Make a motion regarding the NOD.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Shepherd, I.
Yep, I.
Cappy Yellow, I.
Tessie, you're on.
All right.
Just go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under new applications, we have 234-57-57-2V24C14, owners Edward Umos and Mark and Mahala Umos. Requested by the applicant for major subdivision for 14 lots using the Conservation Subdivision ordinance with a waiver on a 49.6 acre of lots. We have 237, 234, Lot 57 and 57, Lot 2.
For the record again, Scott Gold from Beals Associates. I do have with me tonight, Sean Osamas was representing Timber Builders, and Alex Monastero from Gold Realty. I always gotta check with that name. So, we are here for full application of an open space or cluster subdivision. We were here on preliminary application, and there has also been, as of late, a TRG technical review meeting as well to review the project. So to go over the details of the project, what you see in front of you here is the existing property laid out in a conventional subdivision. The total parcel is roughly 49 acres in side, size, excuse me, on the east side of Oak Hill Road. On the plan here, you can see the olive cover, color represents wetlands. The orange is an existing structure located on the parcel with the driveway that leads out to Oak Hill Road, and the green represents the uplands. The wetland is roughly 5% or 2.73 acres of the parent parcel. The conventional layout here is now 15 lots, all with excess of 200 feet of frontage. As a note, we originally came in on the preliminary with 16. There was some lot shape and configuration that the planning board didn't really care for in one location, and I have omitted one lot for that. So basically, the old area here, this used to be a lot combined with that, could be proposed open space, so there's been one reduction in the conventional lots. This would be a loop road configuration, as you see, in 3,900 feet in total length. This would be 1,000 feet to the major intersection of the loop and a 500-foot cul-de-sac. Now, obviously, being a conventional subdivision, this would be the full buildout of the parent parcel, so each lot would be over 80,000 square feet. And as of late, and I know the planning board hates to be bombarded with new plans, but I have made some revisions to the conventional layout that you'll see later, but it is reflected on this board. I didn't want to surprise you of anything, so. Some of the commentary were that we have added a buildable envelope, which is a darkened line within the building areas, so that will be on the future plan. I have added an actual table that references the lot area, the amount of contiguous uplands, and the building area, minor steep slopes, and any ledge. So that's all on our table now on the new plan you will receive. That was mostly commentary that came from CMA, I believe, during the TRG meeting. So this one here, as a result of the conventional, was based on the old regulation in road criteria. So we have submitted, that we discussed previously, a waiver for road length, which is allowed if you have a preliminary meeting for a conventional yield subdivision. The reasoning for that is where it used to be, 1,000 feet used to be to the center of, I believe, the cul-de-sac, it's now the center of the road. So, the center would be actually down in this location. Obviously, the center of this loop would be relatively further over here. So it isn't allowed requirement, any regulations if it's explained to the board, you know, the reasoning. Obviously, the reasoning for this is, the major goal is to do an open space subdivision and provide the tentative 48 acres of open space that will be preserved in the future. The difference between the two, as you can see, this is the overall here representing the open space subdivision. Now, this is 14 lots, which would actually be one less. We have 1,000 foot as allowed to the center of the cul-de-sac, and this would also be 2900 feet less of road versus the conventional. Obviously, there'd be far less disturbance. There was a commentary in the previous meeting, again, in regards to lot shape, I believe Andy had brought it up. There was kind of a narrowing of the strip in this location here, which used to be the old Lot 12. So I tried to relocate, you know, adjust it as much as I could for rectangular shape. By doing that, I actually added an additional access to the open space, so that, this used to be all developed, and now there's actually a break to the footfalls right away. Now, this design here would provide 40-plus acres of open space. I believe there would have been some comments, the Conservation Commission had preliminarily looked at this, and they, obviously, they like this design providing the open space. The developers open to any kind of protection or conservation easement they would like, we just haven't gotten that far at this time. For drainage, we have a kind of a simple design, I have a blow-up of the subdivision. 60 scale here. For the circular features, one here at the base behind the lots of the cul-de-sac, and then one at the entrance toward the left, would be two fire retention ponds. There is basically a divide relatively close to where the existing structure is now, so the four, four drainage will go towards the front of the property, and then the back would go to the rear in the, this area here via a drainage pipe. In addition to changes that would be from your plans, there was also a comment, we are providing a 30,000 gallon fire system. I guess there was concern on hose length from where we had it, being to be able to suppress something further out. So to make sure that we abide by that regulation, I have actually moved the cistern to the location where the new break is in the open space, so we gain 300 feet more into the job. They haven't seen that yet, but I think they'll find that a lot more user-friendly. That's pretty much it. I will try to entertain any questions the board or the public may have.
I think earlier you had mentioned maybe increasing the size of the bulb on the.
I think earlier you had mentioned maybe increasing the size of the bulb on the...
Yeah, good point, Mr. Chairman. Actually, so what we've done, and Mark asked me to put a label on the plans, which I will do. Your standard edge of pavement on the exterior of the cul-de-sac is, I believe, between seventy and seventy-two, as it stands by regulation. This would be eighty-one feet. So diameter-wise, it's twenty feet wider than your standard cul-de-sac, which I think will really help in their plowing situation.
Yeah, if you could provide a drawing of that, that probably ultimately...
Yeah, I've already labeled on the new plans that you'll get. Uh, any questions?
Oh, yeah, but a quick comment. On the yield plan, your road is almost entirely, is substantially on the... As you go left and on the top. Yeah. Excuse me, right on the top. That's pretty much all in the wetlands buffer. So that would be something that, if it was presented as a plan, we would not approve. No mind.
This one here?
Yeah, that section right there. I mean, I think you can move it, you know, up and get it out of the wetlands buffer. But, you know, that would have to happen in order for that to be an approval subdivision plan.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, just looking at it, that's not even an issue. I didn't think it would be a problem, because you could get, I believe, a conditional use for it.
You could, but, you know, we, we require the, every possible, every reasonable effort made to avoid the buffer.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And if you can go further up and get out of the buffer, we would require that.
Yeah.
Right, I think we need demonstration that that needs to, that can be done. I think it can be done, but we need to have confirmation that that can.
Yeah.
There would be no hardship on it, so you'd have to move it out. And the question is, does that impact your yield plan?
It seems like the lots are big enough on the...
Yeah, I was just looking at lot eleven, it, the buildable area and contiguous up is...
Yeah, and...
Way bigger than needs to be, so...
That lot, like you say, became...
Especially with the provided open space, yeah, we can, I can change that.
Looks like it's doable, but we'd need to have a drawing modified and I'll make that happen.
Okay, sure. Get that down.
Any more questions?
Um, really for the board. I have not encountered this before, potential stewardship fee. So do we know what that entails from the Conservation Commission?
So the Conservation Commission mentioned it during the TRG meeting. I don't think they've set anything up yet, but it sounded like they're, the applicant was amenable to it. We haven't gotten any more further yet.
Thank you.
I have a question, clarification. If I look at Table one, road design standards, this is in the Village District, right? Am I reading this wrong, but the, I see maximum length, and I see not, NA, not, not required, not applicable when it comes to the Village District. So I know CMA indicated the length was not per regulations. I'm looking at this, and I don't, I don't see that. Am I reading it wrong?
It's based on the subdivision, not the, uh, not the zoning district.
Subdivision page fifty-one is the, is the table.
What page, Ron?
Fifty-one. You look at the take, the last, the last column is Village Center. And it's got, you know, different requirements. Maximum length is, you know... Says, says NA. So is there not a require, does that not apply to Village District?
I don't think that applies to subdivision, so.
In the subdivision regulations, so.
Yeah.
It's NA, so.
And there's parking lanes and...
Well, but the maximum length is down here.
Yeah, I see that.
It says NA, so I guess my question is, does the thousand feet really apply here?
Ron, the developer's probably gonna kill me, but in all honesty, under maximum length, you have footnote number one.
Yeah.
Number one reads roadway with one point of access measured along the center line from the center of existing street to the center of the turnaround area.
Ah, so you, okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right. I gotta tell them. Right is, right is right.
We were just testing you.
I did right.
Any more comments, um, from the board?
Oh, Ron, is sidewalks required? Sidewalks required here. I think if I, I look at the sidewalks, I think in this district are required.
I think that's up to the purview of the board.
I think so. I probably shouldn't know where it was.
I wasn't aware of that. I thought that was town center only.
Yeah, I don't remember doing one for here or Village Place.
You don't think so?
Yeah, that's why, uh...
But would have went in while it was Village.
Keep on going, Mr. Chairman. I will, I will leaf through and see if I can find it. I saw that somewhere.
I was looking at the entrance from Oak Hill. Look at that sheer wall on the right side as you go through there. And you have an adjacent property. Are you gonna be cutting into that at all to get your fifty foot right away, or?
Nope, so the intent there is, in the open space design, uh, you can see the road is pushed over. So the intent there is actually to utilize the existing driveway. The right side will stay as it is, then widen it to the left. Uh, if anybody has actually been in this area, you can see it's quite a substantial, you know, ledge face here.
I drove over there, yeah.
There was one comment, I believe, from CMA in relative to our grades. Knowing that it is ledge here, and it's a very short length, you can go one-to-one, which is allowed by regulation. And that's because we know it is ledge. So just so we can get a very shallow drainage ditch and get the water out of there. But no, other than that, there's really shouldn't be any effect to this about it to the right.
Well, the first lot, is that lot fourteen?
Here?
No, in, yeah.
Yes, fourteen.
I'm looking at the slope of the driveway to the house. Is that, needs a ten percent grade?
It will, yeah, that will certainly be a fill lot.
Okay.
Yeah, so that'll be built up closer to the road with padded site.
We'll probably be looking for some studies to be done.
As?
Well, the Article seven studies, seven point two, seven point three. I'm assuming... And thirteen, three. I'm assuming we would want the same, similar, very similar studies to what we had done with the... Seven point four issues, traffic is seven five, seven six is an environmental impact assessment. And because you're so close to the neighbor's wells and subject, we'll probably be looking for a hydro-geological study too. See if there's any impact on those wells adjacent to the subdivision.
Okay, we can look at that language. I mean, we're certainly far enough away to meet all state requirements and regulations.
True. You're on a hundred feet, but...
More, yeah, more than that, and you have the open space.
I think what you're doing is taking water from the aquifer there. Want to see if there's gonna be any impact on those wells. I don't know how the board feels about that.
How many units we talking about, fifteen? Usually require...
Fourteen units.
Be fourteen.
Usually require that kind of stuff over twenty.
Over twenty unless there is special circumstances according to the regulations. And I think that having existing homes that close is a circumstance, but... I mean, I don't know how the board feels, but...
And this property is not located in the aquifer either. Which usually kind of trips it.
All right, Scott, I'm ready. On the same table, fifty-one, that's the board, too. If you go down about, uh, seven rows, it says sidewalk, walkway width. And it lists them for the various categories. It's page fifty-one again. It says ten feet for Village District. And then on page fifty-eight, it says, we can, we can, it's optional under twelve point, five point one. So, it's on the table, it says it's required, and then the language says it's, we can, we can require it. So...
The sidewalk?
Yeah.
I actually had a question with this, and I had spoken, I'm surprised it's actually not fixed. I had talked to John Hawkins about this a while ago, and Village Center is an old zone we used to have.
I know.
This is Village District.
We have Village District and we have Town Center, so I don't think it agrees a lot of the Village, Village Center. It's, you know, I think that was supposed to be both.
Yeah.
But, you know, I think... We're applying everything else to the Village Center, so I think there's a requirement for sidewalks here. Like I say, the language on page fifty-eight says we can require it. But it says ten feet here, the width.
For the note, it's the purview of the board to make that choice anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I would ask to where?
You know, the intent is the Village Center, they want walkability to, you know, revitalize downtown. So... Yeah, that's the intent. Does it fit here? It's got some...
The ones that are required for dove development is down to Route nine. State is gonna run a sidewalk from there to the middle school for years. That was the intent of there.
Yeah.
I'm not too sure. So this just would be in the subdivision?
Down to the road. Yeah, in the subdivision under the road where there's no sidewalk, so.
Here's my thought on that. If you put sidewalk even on one side, you can't have open drainage. Now you're requiring a raised sidewalk with curving, closed drainage, totally kind of changes the nature of an open space subdivision. Now you're looking at more of a highly-developed inner-town subdivision. I don't think what...
Well, under the, where it's optional, it says we can, we can require a six-inch raised sidewalk. So that's the language under the optional, we can require six-inch raised, so you can put drain. So that, that won't fly. Let's stick with the one, what, connecting to what?
Well, it's certainly more to, we do want this to be a town road at some point, so you're looking at more maintenance and everything else with sidewalk and curbing.
I mean, that's, that's where it is, it's discretionary, I think it doesn't connect to much, so. I think the dove development, take it to, it's the Town Center.
The whole Town Center thing is different, yeah.
I think, but...
For me, I'd be good without. I don't think it needs to...
No one's gonna walk on Oak Hill.
I guess the question is, is it...
Set to the board here, required or not?
No.
No.
Well, let me, let me...
Finish, please.
Is it something that requires a waiver, I guess would be my question. I mean, I agree that it's probably something we should require, but it doesn't require a waiver request, I guess.
Would that be easier if we added that to the waivers?
I would, just so it's in the record.
Yeah, so it's up to the board if you want to do a waiver. It does say may request, so if it sounds like if you are requesting it...
Yeah, but we're on the table, I think it's, you know, it's, it's, it seems like it's a requirement. And then it gives us language, we can waive it. I think we can waive it. I think it does, and not address it. Have a formal waiver.
Are there questions?
Scott, you asking for a waiver?
Two now. Okay, could you cite the chapter and verse there, please?
Asking for a waiver from the table on requirements for road design standards. Sidewalk width.
He's gonna do it. Oh, okay.
Language.
Well, you would have to say what section you are wanting them to, um, request.
I'm gonna request Table one of section twelve point two point one, Scott.
Yeah, being written right now.
Along with an explanation, which is for the applicant of why it's...
The question, Scott, on the, moved on from the yield plan. The frontage on your subdivision, conservation subdivision plan, what's the frontage? What's the minimum frontage on your, those are at least seventy-five feet? Is that a requirement now, seventy-five feet?
Minimum width is seventy-five feet at the front setback, which they have.
And that is the...
Yes.
Okay.
Did you give, did you provide the, like, actual number for waiver requests for sidewalks? Twelve point five? Just didn't hear it.
It's twelve point three point one.
I think it's twelve point five point one.
Chart is twelve point two point one.
I had two. The, the chart is, but the actual language for sidewalks, bike, bikeways and trails is section twelve point five. Twelve point five point one is the determination of...
The table, the table has it as a requirement, so we're really waiving the requirement on Table one.
Right, which is referenced in twelve point five point one.
It's, it's part of twelve point three point one.
I will see your twelve point three point one and raise you a twelve point five point one. Just put a colon in and cite all of them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll cover it.
Twelve point three point one is access points. It's page fifty-one.
And the section is page fifty-eight. By the way, take this opportunity, the board is looking for a new alternate number of anybody.
It's just a reference to the regulation.
It's, you know, twice a month doing this?
The reference to the actual language, just so you know, is in twelve point five point one.
I think there used to be forms over there for volunteering, so. But it's, it's, it's not, because it says, when you move beyond it, it's, uh, it's the specific language.
Twelve point two point one, so I think it's, that's part of the waiver as well.
Goes into the dimensions of this type of the pedestrian walkways are shown in Table twelve point one for development of certain areas such as within the Village District. The board may require that raised sidewalks be installed. Raised sidewalks shall be at least six inches above grade. And this, and all raised sidewalks shall be privately maintained. This is requesting a waiver from the install, from the board's requirement to install sidewalks.
Now, that's, that says we can do, require a raised sidewalk, have discretion. The table says that they, they gotta be ten-foot wide sidewalks.
Well, no, that says that if we're gonna require sidewalks, look at the chart.
Right.
Look at the table. So this twelve point five point one, by, by requesting a waiver from twelve point five point one, we're saying we are not requiring to install sidewalks, which means he does not meet, need to meet the Table standards. So he doesn't need a waiver.
All right, I'm, I'm done, I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right, let's go to the real waiver. Stop writing.
Almost done.
You got that, Scott?
She's on it.
Go to your request, first requested waiver, if you'd like to, uh, read that, please.
Okay. I believe that was issued to the board. And written by Archimberg. The first one, relationship to the length of the... Back to this one. So everybody have a copy of the waiver here requested by Chimburg? So this would be a waiver to allow the distance to the center of the turnaround for the yield plan to be greater than a thousand feet due to the unique features of the parent parcel. Please see attached. See attached letter by Chimburg Builders. I'll try to read this. As presented in subject in plan waiver question, Chimburg Development is seeking a waiver to the town of Barrington subdivision regulations for residential development at one three eight Oak Hill Road, Barrington, New Hampshire. Chimburg Development is seeking a waiver from section two point two point one road design standards, Table one of the Barrington subdivision regulations, to allow a road that is longer than the allowed thousand feet to the center of the turnaround for the purpose of a yield plan. Zoning ordinance allows for waivers in the yield plan so long the applicant has a preliminary public hearing with the planning board, referencing section six point three point two, colon, four. Parenthesis for, if the plan requires a waiver from these subdivision regulations, a preliminary public hearing shall be conducted by the planning board prior to an applicant's formal submitted application for a major subdivision approval. The applicant is requesting a waiver to allow the distance to the center of the turnaround for the yield plan to be greater than a thousand feet due to unique features of the parent parcel. Due to the odd shape of the parcel, the applicant has prepared a yield plan showing a loop at the end of the road as opposed to a traditional cul-de-sac, which allows the applicant to reach the rear portion of that lot that is dislocated from the remaining land. The proposed loop road is a thousand feet to the start of the loop, but if measured to the center of the turnaround, would exceed the thousand feet, which is why the waiver is requested. We feel this waiver is warranted as it meets the waiver criteria outlined in the subdivision regulations established below. The granting of a waiver will not be detrimental to public safety, health or welfare interest... The granting of a waiver will not be detrimental to public safety, health or welfare interest to the other property and will promote public interest. The granting of this waiver will not be detrimental to public safety, health or welfare or welfare or interest to the other property as it is a waiver for the yield plan only to demonstrate what could be achievable under conventional zoning. Due to the odd shape of the two existing lots, the unique topography and the natural features on site, granting this waiver promotes the public interest by allowing an appropriate number of lots in the yield plan to the overall parcel size. The yield plan with the waiver granted would contemplate 15 new lots plus one existing home lot on 49.6 acres of land, which allows for more than adequate acreage above the 80,000 square foot required for each lot. Each lot shows an adequate space for a home site, driveway, septic, reservoir well radius, which is the intent of public safety, health, welfare and other property and public interest. The waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the Barrington zoning ordinance, master plan, site plan review regulations or official maps. The Barrington zoning ordinance explicitly allows for waivers for the yield plan so long as a preliminary public hearing is held with the applicant as applied for alongside this application. Allowing the waiver for the road length on the yield plan will not in any manner vary the provisions of the Barrington zoning ordinance, master plan, site plan review regulations or official maps, but instead will meet the objectives by allowing appropriate development of this land as conservation subdivision with an appropriate number of lots for that size, shape and natural features of the specific property. Due to the shape of the existing parcel, there is a large area of land that could be not reached if the waiver is not granted. If the waiver is granted, the applicant aims to protect this land as open space as part of the open space design, but needs the waiver to allow for appropriate yield plan calculations to support the development of the parcel in any manner that meets the goals and requirements of the regulations. Can we keep going? Such waiver will substantially secure the objectionary standards requirements of these regulations. Granting this waiver will superiorly to the objects, standards and requirements of the regulations by promoting smart development of the 49.6 acres as 15 new lots and one lot contained the existing single family home structure, which is actually now 14. The parcel offers plenty of buildable land to support now 15 houses, but due to the unique shape and feature of this parcel, the yield plan cannot be developed to support 16 houses with already waiver for road length. By acreage alone, the parcel could support 27, 80,000 square foot lots. Due to the odd shape of the parcel, the applicant has prepared a yield plan showing a loop at a dead end road as opposed to a traditional cul-de-sac, which allows the applicant to reach the rear portion of the lot that is dislocated from the remaining land. This proposed loop road is 1,000 feet to the start of the loop, but if measured to the center of the turnaround would exceed 1,000 feet, which is why the waiver is requested. A practical hardship or unnecessary and unreasonable expense would result from strict compliance with the regulation that clearly outweighs the regulation's benefit. The parcel has an inherent hardship because of the odd shape of the parcel, the unique existing conditions of the two parcels and the size magnitude of the project being considered in the 49 acre parent parcel. Granting the waiver will allow an appropriate yield plan to be achieved based on the site's unique features and odd shape of the existing lots. The underlying parcel has two extended portions, one on each existing lot that are not able to be reached under conventional 1,000 foot to the center of the turnaround provision that could be used to accurately depict a yield plan for conventional build out of the parcel. The applicant, due to the hardship of the existing lot shape and size, has designed instead a loop road in which the loop starts at 1,000 feet in order to include a buildable land on the extended portion of the law in the yield plan. Granting this waiver will allow for justice in the yield plan to have a base density for the conservation subdivision that is appropriate for the 49.6 acre parcel. Factors to be considered in determining existence of hardship shall include site features, geographic location of the property, size, magnitude of the project being evaluated, protection of environmental and natural resources. Thank you for your consideration.
Any further comments by the board? I mean, none will open the public comment. Anybody like to speak to this waiver?
If there's anybody online that would like to speak to the waiver only at this time, please raise your hand and put yourself off mute. I'll give you a moment to respond. Mr. Chairman, I do not see anybody online that would like to respond.
Okay.
I have a general comment on it.
Sure, go ahead.
My, my comment is like, I really don't believe there's a hardship for the development of the property with it, but I think what's being applied is probably the best use of the land in the way that it should be, but I would be hard pressed to say it's a hardship because the land is still there. It's still available. It's still usable. It just doesn't mean they get the yield that they would want out of it. But I do think that the plan itself is an appropriate use for it and is a good use of applying a lot of land into conservation.
Do you want to make a motion to grant the waiver?
Sure. I'll make a motion to grant the waiver as written or as read.
Second.
Roll call.
Naff eye.
Copy LOI.
Jesse, your eye.
All right.
Just go ahead.
Thank you. Now we have to accept the application as complete. Any discussion before we do that?
We should have accepted it as complete before we made the motion.
Not according to the planner.
I thought, I thought we had to accept it as complete and then we would accept.
There was a lot of discussions on waivers. If you don't accept the waivers because they're waiving it from part of the application process, that it's not considered complete. So that's how we're.
Well, I will apologize for my incorrectness.
The waiver was for the yield plan.
We have another waiver request.
No, that was negated, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Talk to Andy about it after the meeting. Any further discussion on the application?
You can always ask for a revote if that's what you're asking for.
I'm fine if you want to request the waiver for 12.5.1.
I thought we determined it wasn't necessary.
Yeah, it's. That's a consensus.
Yes.
Mark.
Okay, you made the motion.
I did.
You seconded.
For complete.
Complete. Roll call.
Shepherd eye.
Naff eye.
Copy LOI.
Jesse, your eye.
All right.
Just go ahead. Application complete. Now I can open this public comment on the application.
I'm sorry, one moment, sir.
Okay.
Did you make a motion to accept the application as complete? I know you said first and then seconded. Yes?
Yes. I motioned to accept the application as complete. Ron seconded the application and we have all voted.
Okay. Okay, it's opening to public comment. Anybody like to comment on this application that's accepted, which means the process starts from this point on? Anybody online?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak for or against during public comment period about the application? If so, please raise your hand and put yourself off mute. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody online that would like to comment, public comment.
Okay, I'll close up the comment.
I have another comment if.
Oh, go ahead.
Sure.
I've got one too.
On the the conservation subdivision plan. Andy, I'm shocked you didn't say this. Lot 2.
On which plan? I'm sorry.
The.
The open space or?
This one. Conservation subdivision.
Yeah.
The plan I have, lot 2, kind of goes down and then jogs over. Yeah. And we like to keep them rectangular to the extent possible, and I see no reason why that jogs over.
Well, actually, he's putting the sister.
That's the sister.
The sister?
Yeah. And access to the open space.
I see.
So the town will have.
So there's a good reason. Okay.
And if you look the way they came in, while you were off gallivanting and the rest of us were here working, you would have caught this. No. If you look the way the lots came in, they bisected at a point which didn't end up creating access to the open space. So it was actually, there was a very meaningful conversation about creating that access and opening it up.
I was gallivanting and I'm not sorry for that.
I, I don't blame you.
And the mail kiosk will be somewhere at the approach.
Yep, right now it's out front where the sister was because that will be reviewed and approved by the mail post master.
Right. The only comment I had is I had mentioned some studies. We should probably start these at any point, get them to CMA, just to help you with the process. So we'd start with grading and erosion sediment control plan, which includes drainage and erosion. 7.3 is stormwater management plan, obviously, and everything associated with that. We are looking for. That includes 13.3. 7.4, see if there are any issues with flood hazard areas. There's no flooding possibility.
Not here. No, no, sorry. It's too high.
I think that's why I deleted that. 7.5 is the traffic analysis.
Now, on that one, if I may ask, you can do different stages. Like when we did Bending Brook.
Yep.
We gave basically traffic counts and traffic number analysis, not a full traffic study, which is basically the same amount of lots. Is that suitable to the board?
I think there's a lot more road impact and traffic on Oak Hill than there is over by Bending Brook.
Isn't there a vehicle count that we?
Bellago is kind of busy.
I'm just trying to think.
Take off 125 to cut off.
Oh, yeah, 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 no.
Then either take K or.
I don't know what the counts are.
Problem with that? I don't think there's a lot of. Okay.
14 lots.
Yeah. I think. Instead of a full traffic study, huh? That makes sense.
Actually, an impact study.
Is that a full?
Then we got 7.6, which is environment impact assessment. We did need more information on the slopes that exist too. Because the regulations state, state 35% grades.
That's correct.
That you have to delineate. But as you're getting into 7% roads and 10% driveways, even something around 25%, and I think doesn't affect this, but in the future we'll probably be going to 25.
Understandable. That's, a lot of communities have that.
Right. So if you could do that, delineate it by color or something, just so people will be able to see it.
Delineate which?
Well, I think on both because we still have to see if the, on the yield plan, if, if the grades are acceptable for a road that you're proposing to.
I think for 35%, only, only build.
Yeah, but.
But that should, that way, that should come out of the building envelope. That should not be counted.
Yeah, I can actually address that anyways.
Include that in your.
Right. It shouldn't be included, not only in the.
But I'm just saying, as you're going along the road on the yield plan, for example.
Yep, so I did it based on CMA's comment. I did a slope analysis.
Yep.
Just so I can tell the board already.
Okay.
They're not in the documents that you have, but I've actually hatched anything that's over 35%. The only area on the entire site, you can't see it right now, but it's grayed out, which is actually right here. We have ledge and then you have the existing driveway and then on the other side is another small strip of 35%. That's it on the entire job. I didn't do 25s because it's not in the regs.
It's not in the regs.
But I can differentiate that if you want to see some of them, but that's.
I just didn't want you to get delayed because you've got details to show us how the driveways would be imposed on the.
Yep, no, that's totally fine. Especially 200 feet of frontage.
Detail on the contours too would be helpful. Particularly, I forget the sheet number. Yield plan didn't have a lot of information. And then finally, we are still questioning about the 7.7 hydro geological study. How do people feel about that? How do things, you know?
With the impact on wells?
Yeah. As you said, you're, you've got the 100 foot buffer. Actually, the wells are right on that buffer, aren't they?
Well, the well heads, I mean, you still got your, you know, we were at least 100 feet from anybody's neighboring property line plus or minus, and that's not to say theirs are right on the property, you know, as well.
Any comments on the board? What do you think? Is that necessary? Hydro geological, 7.1, mapping local groundwater flow, aquifer characteristics, including not limited elevation transmisses and boundaries. Exists, existing background water quality, location of the butter water supplies, wells and septic systems, which we will. Location, capacity of the proposed septic system, which you're discussing, and estimates the transport of contaminants from any septic system, which could be existing ones that are old, such as nitrates at the property boundary and the butter's water supplies. Hydrogeologic studies shall be performed by qualified. Trying to get a sense of the board here.
I think this is very similar to Bending Brook and we didn't require it there.
Okay. Agreement? Not?
Well, just because it was done that way.
That's what we should, yeah.
Right.
I, I mean.
But our precedence has been over 20 lot subdivisions.
Yeah. Unless special surges. Special surges.
Even over 20, I think we could. Right. Requested.
Okay.
The big concern I would have on that is with the wetland that is at the back end of that neighborhood, everything is draining that direction, which means it's all going to end up in a wetland, which potentially becomes part of people's either aquifer drink, if their drinking system depending on at what point bedrock is, is impacted or encountered.
Right.
And how deep people drill their wells.
When you start drilling wells too, things change a lot.
Yep.
Unlike days where they pounded the well.
If I can ask Andy, what do you mean all? Because really this, the way this is designed, it's actually bisected almost in half. But the existing homestead is the high point. So that half is going forward and this half is going there. So it's not all consolidated into one.
So from the homestead back, which is the majority of the subdivision.
Yeah, so this is a high point. You can see the two grades. That's your crown right there.
Right.
All that goes this way and then that goes that way.
So you'll, realistically, you have the homestead and four lots that stay at the front end and will go, anything would drain toward that
Five.
Small detention area up there. And then the balance of it all moves back to that wetland, which again continues to flow down toward all the residences that would run down Oak Hill Road and end up out on the Route 9 side of that.
Well, really, if you're talking surface water and drainage, really all of it, other than the clean roof water is contained and then goes into this bio retention pond, which is designed to capture it all and lead you back into the grounds. You know, there's no oval land.
Right, for that end of it, it's when I, when I think about it, what I'm looking at is you're going to have all your subsurface disposal systems, your septics that are all continuing to move their, their processes to leach, treat and then continue moving through groundwater. So you're taking an area that's had no impact and now is going to end up with 10 more impacts heading down toward that wetland.
Yeah, make a motion that we require. Vote, yes or? Naff eye.
Copy LOI.
Jesse, your eye.
All right.
Just go ahead. Okay. All right, next we have to, when do you want to continue this?
I have one more issue. I know I'm hitting Table 1 a lot and not doing very well on Table 1. But I, I see right away a 60 feet. I think I see 50 feet on your, your drawing.
For right away? Yeah, I'm not sure which one trumps though.
I'm just looking at table. I see 60.
Major access in the same. Which is not by zoning area, by road criteria. This is only 15 lots.
Yeah, but I, I see 60. So I guess unless you point me the language that says 60 is not the requirement. Guess I'm kind of looking at 60 as a right away requirement.
And again, the whole village center thing, it's, it doesn't say village district. I'm sorry, but.
You know, I'm open to.
Again, I will point that out that that is up to the discretion of the board. So that's the second time you've.
No, I get that, but we've done three other jobs and this, and we've not gone with a 60 foot right away.
Point me the language that says that we, you know, it's not required or? The other.
Or sell one.
Okay.
Sike the, what the waiver would be.
The.
I know you have other projects, too, behind me.
Yeah, table one under twelve point two point one.
So just curious, I know she's writing that. Required that anywhere else?
I can't remember what's required anywhere.
Neither. Well, Malago was. Malago was.
You know, it could be because of the sidewalk. That would require fifty plus ten would be the sixty. So, not to help you, Scott, but if it's a sidewalk, that's the way we think we get to sixty. You could item for fifty. But I think, I think there would be sixty because of the ten-foot sidewalk. Typical fifty plus ten-foot sidewalk. I think sixty comes. So, eliminate the sidewalk. Say that fifty-foot right-of-way.
Yep. Yeah, if you contain the sidewalk within.
I mean, the sidewalks are in the wrong way. I think that's.
Don't need a waiver?
I think we need a waiver.
Any of the section. Sure, this means it's good. Would it be twelve point two point one? Right-of-way width?
Right-of-way. Right-of-way says sixty, and your, and your answer is fifty. I think that's where you.
That's the way.
It's an episode. You don't have to require the sidewalk.
We should get that straight to determine what they're talking about. Does it include the building?
Oh, sure.
Is there a motion to grant this waiver for case number? Two dash B dash twenty-four sub. The waiver would allow a fifty-foot right-of-way with sixty. Fired.
I still move.
In the village district.
Still move.
Oh, second.
Full call, please.
Shepherd eye.
Napa, I. I'm still looking at stuff.
EpiLOI.
Just your eye.
Allen, I.
Just call I. Okay. Thank you. We get beyond that. Do you like to return? Where should we continue this? To the next meeting, or? Also.
We'll shoot for the next one. If we need to continue, we'll continue.
December third, I believe.
December third? And anything, you mentioned CMA review. They can stop that process.
The board, if, they, if. If the board wants to, you can do that.
Yeah, well, that would open.
But you wanted to have them do renovations to the yield plan before you send that to CMA, or? Wanted a clarification for that, because they will review the yield plan.
Are you going to do these parallel? Any revisions to the yield plan? There will be. I mean, really, they were very interested. Yield plan are in your purview, because it's not really engineering.
And we just asked you to move the road up. That shouldn't be a big deal.
That's, yeah. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you would like to have CMA review, I just need a motion, but you would like them to review, like the subdivision regulations, the drainage, and then I have these, the hydrological study, environmental impact assessment, stormwater management plan, traffic count. And also, they should, the applicant to provide more information on the slopes.
Okay.
Slops.
Slops, oh, yeah.
That's exactly what we want.
Okay.
That is the motion. And I am. Second?
Second.
Full call.
Napa, I.
EpiLOI.
Just your eye.
Allen, I.
Just call I. That gives you the chance to, you know, as you get things done, to just get it to see.
And then a motion.
December, December seventh, no.
Third.
Give me the third. December seventh, if you don't want that.
December third.
I make a motion. We can use this.
I need a motion.
December third.
Full call.
Shepherd eye.
No, wait, I need a second.
Oh, second.
Andy?
Oh, Bob. Napa, I.
EpiLOI.
Just your eye.
Allen, I.
Just call I. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Moving along. Oh, sure. Next item is a request for the applicant from minus subdivision regulation, subdivision of a five-acre lot on map two four four, lot five, located at one thirteen Corbett Road in the general residential district into two parcels. Come forward, please.
Evening again. Steve Olds from Loyd Plains, here on behalf of Mr. Garland for two-lot subdivision. Basically, we're taking twenty-six acres during a two-lot subdivision and making it twenty-one acres and five acres. Require road frontage of two hundred feet and. Land area for eighty thousand square feet. The plan before you tonight is a little bit changed from what is submitted, because I addressed all of the reviewers' comments on my plan. I didn't have time to bring new plans in, but basically, it shows the well radius and minor note changes.
He's got it.
It's on.
Talk, talk louder.
So I addressed all the plan changes from the comments from the planner, and we're here tonight to answer any other questions you may have.
Any questions?
Was the wetland still actioned on this property?
By David Lane. And it was done on the lot coming out, the out parcel.
So it covers the entire front of the property, the wetlands?
No, it only covers entire front half of the lot.
Of the new lot.
Of the new lot.
It only covers the whole new lot and a portion of the existing lot.
There's buffer and wetlands.
Yes, buffer and wetlands are on here. Here's the buffer line.
Okay.
So where is going to be your access to this smaller lot?
Access on the lot is going to be weaving in around telephone pole.
Okay. And that's not through the buffer?
It is.
That's through the buffer.
Through the wetlands and the buffer.
The wetlands, too?
Maybe wetlands, depending on what we have to do.
Yeah, but we're creating a lot that requires a nine point six and a wetlands crossing and all the access.
Right. And I believe it's steep slopes getting up into the back of that. Like, I would want to know that you can get a driveway in there that meets our grade. Like, just from generally looking, I was like, there's nothing in four point one point three on the driveway, six point seven point one. You know, is the land suitable for development due to steep slopes and excess drainage? That, like, the list went on and on. Once I got into eleven point one for character of the land reference to a driveway, eleven point two point one parents one, eleven point two point one parents two.
They should cover all that, right?
And does the lot shape meet requirements, one to three? I don't think it does.
Yes, it meets requirements there.
I think it will.
He has several options regards to driveway. Driveway to the top, it's his land, it's private land, but he can also build right here at the buffer, and he's perfectly fine meeting the slope.
But when you're subdividing it, you've got to prove that it's capable of meeting the requirements so that it isn't.
I can meet the requirement sitting right here, fifty feet off of that buffer.
Where's the driveway coming from?
The driveway can come in right here off the road, right by the power pole and go in.
There's nothing that shows us that, though.
It doesn't have to be shown. I'm here for a simple two-lot subdivision.
You're right, and the requirement of the subdivision is that it has to meet the standards, and it has to show that under eleven point one, and this does not do that.
I guess the problem here is you're, you're creating a lot that is going to require a wetlands buffer impact and a wetlands impact down the road.
Correct.
So we are creating a lot that's going to require a special exemption in the future.
Correct.
We are supposed to do everything we can to prevent wetland buffer impacts. And creating a lot that requires it is problematic. Problem for us. So we're creating a situation where this can't, this lot can't be used without wetland buffer impacts.
You're creating a hardship.
Yeah. We're creating a hardship by creating this lot. This is.
It, it wouldn't even meet the requirements to accept the application as complete.
I would agree on that, because it's very hard for us to figure out what's going on. The size of it is too small. It should be a whole other sheet that just. The concern is on that new lot. A separate sheet showing that lot in a greater, with greater clarity.
Well, there is something on the backside.
Yeah. Well, let's see. That's not much helpful. It's still the same size.
And, you know, just so.
Post-it stamp size is what we're looking at. That's all.
And just to further, monument's got to be three hundred feet, and it doesn't feel that you, those, you put them every three hundred feet.
Yep.
That's another issue. But creating a wetland, creating a lot that requires a nine point six and a wetlands crossing in the future. I don't think we've ever done that.
Just proposed language to add that I had worked out.
Will a nine point six allow them to cross a wetland buffer if?
No, wetland, crossing, they need a state, and they need us. We, we control the buffer. State would control the wetlands crossing, so they'd need both.
But our zoning doesn't allow it at all, does it?
No, it does. We can have a special exemption for nine point six. But everything's supposed to be done to avoid that. Creating a lot that absolutely requires it. So are we doing everything we can to avoid it? I mean, everything we can to avoid it says, no, don't create the lot.
Right.
So we're kind of in a quandary where, you know, this is, this is creating, as Andy said, a hardship that, you know, down the road. So I don't think we've ever done that before. I don't think we've ever created a lot that didn't have, you know, some access.
But our zoning allows us to.
Yeah.
In, in the wetland itself.
Wetlands is state. There's no buffer requirement from the state. Buffer's town. So you need a wetlands crossing.
But this would go through the wetland. So we're allowed, our zoning allows a wetlands crossing, or no?
That's state issue.
This is state.
But we, what we're, but the buffer goes around the wetlands, so we would have a waiver for the buff part.
So we could go through the buffer. That's us. The wetlands are here. The state would take over the reverse side of the buffer. Consider that. Did you consider an easement on the other lot to bring?
That is a possibility.
But our regulations are to push that you do not, that you do not put easements in place. That's specifically called out in the regulation for subdivision.
Just trying to help the guy, but.
Well, this is the problem, is we, we do this, and then we create additional hardships and problems that we shouldn't be creating, because there is no hardship. We make a hardship.
Yeah. Lot of wetlands in Barrington.
Conservation didn't have any, have any issue with it.
The concerns that they had at the TRG meeting, they were concerned about the wetland drainage, because it didn't show all of the wetland. And the nine point six, that creating a lot and having the nine point six.
They go through assessment tour?
They did not on this one. And then at their meeting, it, they discussed a culvert to be installed for the drive installation. And they had no other additional comments after that.
Is this wetlands under three thousand square feet? Under three thousand?
Actually.
I'd asked the applicant. I'm not sure. Actually, I asked him to label all the wetland sizes, and if it's under three thousand.
If you ask a soil scientist to ascertain that, then that might solve the problem.
If it's under three thousand square feet, we don't.
It's not under three thousand total for all the wetlands, but you're talking about the wetlands, because there's actually lawn, there's upland between the two wetland pockets. So if you're saying contiguous, then yes, it's under three thousand. But if you're adding it all together, non-contiguous, then you're over.
Does that require a contiguous three thousand?
No.
But there were, like, several, like, several spots of, like, wetland here, wetland here, and even if the buffers go over, we only, the building department side, I'll put it that way, look at the three hundred square feet.
Three thousand.
Three thousand, sorry, at that one spot, not the entire parcel.
They're each separate.
Both there. For essentially.
We have some language in our regulations.
Yeah, so under the.
Under the nine. Five, if it's mentioned, or nine six.
I believe it's under nine point six.
Maybe nine four.
Under nine. In our zoning warrants, for nine point five, print these four G, and isolate a wetland or surface water of three thousand square feet or less that does not meet the definition of a swamp, marsh, bog, or vernal pool. The wetland buffer is not required. That's why I asked for.
So do we have any?
To be labeled. No.
There's nothing that proves that. Documents that.
Not with the initial submittal.
No, they didn't have a soil scientist.
So it's, it sounds like that's your path.
It's the what?
Under three thousand square feet is your path.
Yeah, so we're under three thousand square foot, the pot. It's not contiguous.
I think verbal is not going to do it. You got to document that.
Wetland scientists.
Wetland scientists should document.
Sign off on it.
David Lane. That's perfectly fine. He's already done delineation. He's already provided everything. That's what we located. Sorry?
Where, where do we have that documented, anywhere?
No, right here on the plan, say David Lane did wetland delineation.
I think they're, you're inquiring about the actual size, correct?
Yeah, the size, yeah. You mentioned three thousand, and that.
Three thousand contiguous. That's the question we're talking about.
I just see fifteen. I was, where's it under, we say it's under three thousand square feet. I didn't see that.
You're just reading out of the regulations, correct? Under three thousand square feet?
No, but it's got to be in the plan. Someone's got to tell us that.
I can put a label on there saying that each pot is under three thousand square feet. That's fine.
That has been reviewed and delineated by.
Yeah, it's got to be certified by the, the wetland scientists. It's got to certify that.
I don't see a stamp anywhere. I'm sorry.
The stamp would be provided on the final plan. Standard practice.
Okay, for this one, where it's so wetland sensitive. I mean, I think we need to be four. We, we need some of the, from the wetland scientist documenting that.
I can provide a letter from the wetland scientist. That's fine.
Okay, that'll do it.
So are we?
Continuing.
Well, yeah, but there's also going to be a waiver, right? But, but when I look at the acceptance of the application, what are the questions that we're going to ask? Like, I'm seeing a building site, but from what I see, you got to be a mountain goat to get to it.
Right. So the, to vote for an application as complete, you see if they have met all the checklist items. If you've. the checklist items. If you've, um, if you feel like they have, that's when you accept the application as complete. They are asking, he is asking for a waiver, um...
About not having to delineate the rest of the wetlands.
Off the, yeah, new lot, yeah, that's...
All this, anything down here.
Off the new lot, that's okay. Were the chess bits done?
Yes.
And from a staff letter, I had note what was, um, still deficient from the checklist. I guess that's how you decide if it's complete or not, as well.
Is it possible to get drawings that can be read?
On file, I provided the large pocket. That's, yes.
If that is the applicant's responsibility to the board.
I am following the checklist that I, as a voter for this town, and you, as a planning board member, also enacted, provided the number of sheets that were required, large and small. I can provide extra if asked for, but they're in town files.
So, are we making a formal request to the applicant for a larger file, so we can actually read them?
I'd like to be able to read them.
Me too.
That's fine.
So, we require, as far as the checklist, only a few copies. I do have them in the file here. If you want to take a quick look at them, or you would like them all for the board.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
Would you like to see the two copies we have, or would you like the individual ones for each member of the board when we meet again, so we can...
I think if we had one, just show on the new lot.
Now, we don't need the full plan set. We only are concerned right now with the wet, yeah, that new lot, just the new lot.
We need to detail on the new lot.
That's fine.
That should do it.
And the letter from the wetland scientist. And I think with that, we can say it's complete, that application's complete. You want, we saying it's complete, I'm saying it's not complete.
I don't...
Yeah, I think we should, yep. A little more to be submitted.
Yeah, if you could do that, that would be great. Thank you.
I have brought a letter from the wetland scientist, and I can provide you a blow up of that lot.
Appreciate it.
I request to be tabled until...
So, you're asking...
Is it a table or continue off?
Continue to the...
Continue to the 3rd?
Would that be...
Be available for the 3rd?
Motion, will you continue us to the December 3 meeting?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Provide.
Kathy, yellow eye.
Tess, your eye.
Okay.
Whiskel eye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, 231-37-GR slash HCO-24 parking lot, Landry Conservation Easement. Hello?
Hello. Uh, I don't have any boards. I don't know if it's easier to go here or there, but this is, uh, my first planning board meeting, so this is all new to me.
Oh, that's too bad.
Uh, my name is Johan Handley. I'm the Trails and Community Engagement Manager for the Southeast Land Trust in Epping. Um, we are the easement, Conservation Easement Holder on the Landry property, um, on Route 202. Um, and I'm here representing Selt, and also representing, uh, Jameson Joan Landry, um, who gave me the authority to put forward this application to you all.
Great.
Um, we are asking for a minor site plan, um, with a waiver of the technical drawings, um, to build a approximately 48 by 32 gravelled parking lot. That'll be located, um, adjacent to the existing woods road that runs through the Landry's property from 302 up to Nippo Lake.
202.
202, sorry. Yeah, 202. I, I moved down here from North Conway a couple of years ago. I'm still, still learning all the roads and stuff. Um, uh, the parking lot will be built, um, mostly out of native material. Um, it's at the highest, driest point we can get before the land hits about 40% grade. Um, it will be constructed, um, we generally, we contract with John Martin Forestry. Um, John and Greg DeSanto are the ones who built the winter parking lot at Barrington, um, or winter parking lot at Stonehouse a couple of years ago here in town, um, and a lot of our other parking lots around. So, they're, you know, well-known to Selt. We use them a lot for our construction purposes, so, um, yeah. Um, I noticed in the provisional notice of decision, there were a few, um, additions that Vanessa had asked for, the DOT driveway permit and change of use, uh, which I have received and have provided to, uh, the planning office already. Uh, that came in just after she issued this letter, so, um, and I've already added that to an updated site plan that I drew, um, that I sent to Vanessa electronically this afternoon. Um, I've spoken to Mr. Landry. He has no issues changing his existing sign that says no parking in front of the gate to no parking for emergency access signs, which I will purchase and install. Um, he also has no issue adding a fire department lock to the existing gate, so the fire department can get through the gate, uh, for any emergency purpose.
Uh, any questions at this point? Oh, sure. All right, we have an open public comment. Hold on. You're coming up.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to start reading the waiver.
If we weigh the waiver, um, just a quick question. Off of 202, is it paved for any distance, or is it all gravelled?
It is not currently paved. In the DOT, uh, permit, they asked for a five-foot apron 24 feet long, which we know is pretty standard practice. Anytime we change a highway, uh, an apron off one of the state roads, they ask for that. So, we will do that once the construction of the parking lot's complete.
You're going to do that in conjunction with this project right here?
Yep.
Okay, first, we're going to do the waiver. Uh, requave, the requirement to have all site plans shall be prepared and stamped by a professional engineer. Boundary monuments shall be certified by a licensed surveyor per Section 3.1.1 of the Site Plan Review Regulations. Uh, not granting the waiver would be a necessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver should not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Um, going to open the public comment for the waiver only. Just the waiver. You want to talk about the waiver?
Talk about the driveway, the parking lot, for a second.
Almost, almost.
Not yet.
Is there anybody online that, um, just would like to public comment on the waiver only at this point for this application? If so, please raise your hand and unmute yourself. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody that would like to comment on the waiver.
Open public comment. Going to vote on the waiver, motion to grant the waiver? I'll make that motion, seconded by...
Seconded.
Oh, okay. A little louder, please. Roll call?
Shepherd eye.
Aye, aye.
Kathy, yellow eye.
Tess, your eye.
Whiskel eye.
Okay, I'll say aye. Um, vote to, uh, vote to accept the application as complete.
Make a motion to accept the application as complete?
Seconded by me. Roll call?
Shepherd eye.
Aye, aye.
Kathy, yellow eye.
Tess, your eye.
Alan, aye.
Whiskel eye. I'm going to open it now to public comment on the application.
I'm Peter Dawson. I live at 17th Sarah Lane.
Get up to the mic, please. It's all videoed.
I'm Peter Dawson. I live at 17th Sarah Lane, also in Portsmouth. I've been in New Hampshire for 65 years, and I love the state and our concern, we love Nippo Lake, it's a diamond in the woods. So, I represent the Nippo Lake Association on the Board of Directors. Our concern, this is the first time that we're looking at public access, which we understand is, is open to the public. Our concern is numbers, and once the word Nippo Lake gets out, we want to ensure that we don't have a deluge of people. Uh, this Landry Conservation Area has the largest piece of shoreline on Nippo Lake. The areas east, west, and south are accessible by road, by dirt road only to the lake. So, this is a brand-new venture for Selt, and we over-enjoyed the Selt, and, and the folks put this together, this conservation area, because it's quiet up there. So, our request is that the sign says Landry Conservation, that's great, and open dusted on. We would appreciate not mentioning Nippo Lake on the sign. We understand there's, there's going to be a kiosk with maps. Um, the word lake in New Hampshire, fireworks. So, we would appreciate not mentioning a lake on the sign, very simple, and possibly also no parking on Route 202. Um, we have seen in, in history, Mount Major, for example, is a mile of cars on each side of Route 11 of, of Mount Major. So, we would like to limit parking on 202 if possible. It's not, it's not...
On 202?
On 202.
DOT would not appreciate that.
Say that again?
DOT would not appreciate parking on that.
Good.
That wouldn't last very long.
They don't like parking Route 11 either in Alton, but there's one mile in each direction on Route 11 from Mount Major. They put cones out in the summertime, cars don't park. So, that's our request, not a big request, but just to keep Nippo Lake signage off.
I think that would be something you would direct to Selt. As you said, they don't have to mention it, but they'll have a kiosk with a map, I suppose.
That's, that's one point.
And you talked about, you talked the road having 40% grades?
Well, so the, if you, you can... Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah. So, if you can see the, the drawing that I provided, um, where the, where the road turns, just to the right of where we're, we're talking about putting in the parking lot.
Yep.
The land above there climbs, I believe it's known as Mount Misery.
Yes.
That goes up to the lake, and basically from that point where the road turns and starts to go up, the land behind it is at approximately a 40% grade, so it's...
You're not going to get a lot of people in there.
Yeah, and so, um...
65 years, I've seen people show up in tents and canoes and...
Yes.
65 years in New Hampshire.
How many parking spaces?
Four.
Four.
Yeah, so it's, it's 48 by 32, which a standard parking lot space, 10 and 1/2. So, we're, we're planning for four cars.
And it's difficult to get to the water, like, with a canoe, because you're going to have to carry it a long way.
You would still, you would have to walk up. It's three-quarters of, ish of a mile from the parking area to the lake.
Now, this gate, this, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, sir.
This gate you're talking about, when would it be closed?
Uh, it'll be closed. The gate...
When?
Oh, it'll, all the time.
Yeah.
So, the gate, so the gate right now is...
There's no gate to the parking lot, right?
There's no gate into the parking lot, no. The gate is on the road past the parking lot, so you can't drive further than the parking lot.
But addresses concerns, you know, you could post signs, no overnight parking.
Yes. Yeah. All of our parking, or most of our parking lots, we, we post as open from dawn to dusk, um, you know, in, according to various towns' wishes. Um, and we also, this is not, um, so, those who are here familiar with the Selt website and all of our formalized trail systems, this is not a formal trail Selt, or Selt Trail System. This is a parking lot that allows access because the Landry's and the Conservation Commission thought it was a valuable thing for the town to have access to this land. It's not going on the website. It's not going to be a map that's put out, you know, as, as part of our public, like, these are our, um, trail systems. So, it's, if you know it's there, now there's a safe place to park, so you're not parking on 202. If you don't know it's there, there's not going to be a Selt roadside sign, there's not going to be a ton of visibility, so it's not going to become an attractant, is the goal.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to, any more public comment? One more?
Sure.
For the record, Paul Moss Teller, 83 Washington Street. I am in a butter to the conservation land. I've lived there 21 years. I know this land. My driveway has been washed out twice. Hale Pond is retained by a beaver dam, which is roughly 75 feet to 100 feet from this driveway. There's ferns on one side, cattails on the other. Now, if there's an application, you should be doing a drainage easement. Willow Brook had a 54-lot subdivision developed and approved by the town 2005, 2007. Where their proposed parking lot is, there's ledge there. So, my, my concern is, are they going to be blasting? Um, it, there is a great spot there for swimming, and on a hot day, the word is going to be out. Four parking spots is not going to be enough. I did talk to Jim about a month ago, and I'm not going to vouch for what he had said, but the, this was logged in 2005. Those wood roads are from logging. The ideal spot for a parking spot, which would, uh, work in your trail system, would be right at the end of Swain Road. Um, it's level there, line of sight is 400, 500 feet in each direction. I took my measurement wheel out there, regardless of this driveway permit that was just granted a week ago, 200 feet. Cars go by my house at 60 to 70 miles an hour. 2013, two people have died right on that bend. I would recommend every one of you, I've marked the road on both sides with a, some pink, uh, spray paint. Just standing there for five minutes, could have been an accident, just me painting there. So, my concern is, this is not the best spot for parking for this land. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close public comment at this point.
We're no longer reading in the 3. Need a motion to grant the notice of decision?
Um, just a note for the board, too. Um, when you talked about the general and subsequent conditions, I also added the no overnight parking, um, as a condition.
Sorry, I just have a question. Like, when we look at, is there an existing pull-off? There's not an existing pull-off there now, currently?
Not to park, no. No, there's just the, the turn into the existing woods road. Um, and then there's enough room to park a car, unlock the gate, and then go in, and the gate will be moved uphill.
And do we have sightline? Like, do we have enough sightline for a drive, like you would do with any other person that came in for an application for a driveway permit or to put, build a lot where they have to prove that there's sightline to get in and out of that?
Oh, okay.
This is, yeah, off a...
DOT has already approved it.
Yeah.
I missed...
What, yeah, what were the conditions?
There, it's, it's in your packet, um...
I say I missed the...
So, will you be maintaining the site distance, seasonal safe site distance?
Yeah.
So, I'll be trimming vegetation and...
Yes.
You'll be putting in the culvert?
Uh, that'll be done, uh, by John Martin Forestry, uh, and as part of the project, yeah.
The teenage culvert?
Yes. Yeah, which is, I think the DOT said 12, so, but John, John had already planned for 15, so I'm not going to downgrade it. Okay, yeah. I'm assuming John knew that from previous projects.
I'm going to make a motion to grant the notice of decision?
Seconded.
Roll call?
Shepherd eye.
Kathy, yellow eye.
Tess, your eye.
Alan, aye.
Whiskel eye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item here, we have... Wake Chris up.
Good evening. How are you?
Well. Do you want to give your brief remarks into the record, or...
What's that?
Remarks you sent? Do you want to do an introduction, or...
Oh, of course. I'll give a presentation. Typically, you read the case into the record.
Oh, that's true.
I'm happy to jump right in.
It's getting late. It's getting late. Designed for major subdivision, get right page here, uh, for 35.84 acre lot, now 257, lot 29-1, located on Mary Hill Road in the general direct residential zoning district.
Chair members of the board, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing, uh... Chair members of the board, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing the Kucher family here this evening, and Joe Felzone, who's the applicant for the application. As the chair read, this project's on Mary Hill Road. Uh, there's approximately thirty-four acres of total land mass that is available for the proposed development. As I pointed out in our writings, uh, there's a number of sort of special features of this site that I'll go through. But my first open comment for probably most people in the room is that this is a four-lot, single-family subdivision. This is not anything larger or greater than that. I believe there was a comment placed on a public forum that misled a number of people into thinking that it's a much bigger project than it is. The approach on this project is simpler, is oftentimes easier and better than more complex and complicated. And so we're taking a simplistic approach to subdividing this parcel instead of a, a more complicated approach. So with that said, I'll go through the, the features of the land and our general proposal. This is a design review. We would take your general comments here this evening and then go back, finalize design engineering, which we would then bring back for, for open discussion. I did try and provide enough information to the board, enough, you know, good detail, so that we can have a meaningful conversation about the project. So, uh, the project site has frontage on Mary Hill Road, formerly Wood Road. And we're proposing four lots, two of, the, the first two lots in the subdivision are proposed to be what we would call four May lots. Two hundred feet of frontage, approximately six hundred feet deep, to ensure that we meet your three-to-one ratio. They contain eighty thousand square feet of buildable area. The second lot, or the third lot is proposed to be a back lot that has seventy-five feet of frontage. And again, opens up the, the back of the site for a single-family home to be constructed towards the rear. And then the fourth lot in the subdivision has a larger amount of frontage and goes back approximately the same depth that the first two have. So we're trying to create a nice square, rectilinear subdivision. A few topographic features to discuss. The front of the site is, it's, it's not flat. It's probably a five percent general slope off the road. The southeastern corner has some steeper slopes in it. So that's this area here. Uh, there's a central portion to each one of these lots that has steeper slopes. Those slopes are not thirty-five percent. They are less than thirty-five percent. So they're not removed from any building calculations, but we're also not proposing any building construction on those slopes. And then the rear of the lots all contain a large, generally flat area, which we're attempting to reach with a, a common driveway, and I'll get to the detail of that in a minute, for development, so that all of the homes would be placed basically at the rear of all of these lots, so that there'd be no development towards Mary Hill Road itself. Towards the back of the site, there's a large wetland that is connected to the wetland that is on the abutting property that's eased by Southeast Land Trust. And then this land almost goes out and touches Marsh Road, or formerly Long Marsh Road. But it doesn't actually have frontage on that Class VI roadway. There's a trail that cuts right through the ridge of the property that does connect over to the SALT property, but is obviously not a part of their trail system, whereas this is private land. It also connects the closest to butter to the south and east, which is Bran Shea, who happens to be a member of the Kucher fam, family in some way, shape. As far as access, instead of trying to develop individual driveways to go up the slope for each one of these, we've decided to go with a shared driveway access. Because we're proposing four off from that shared access, it's actually considered a private roadway. So, uh, the road design standards for this private road would require a max grade of nine percent within the, within the straight sections, less in the curves, so that we can meet our nine percent max in the tighter radiuses. And we have run profiles and done enough engineering to this point to know that we will be able to meet those requirements and regulations. Originally, we looked at providing a, a second driveway access point, so that we would only have three lots off from this one driveway. But at the end of the day, it really created additional construction to get to approximately the same location. And so it, it just made more sense to basically propose this all as one. That way, we can deal with stormwater from the proposed developed site and driveway in one location. Obviously, it's better access management to have one driveway. A lot less earth to be modified from a sediment erosion control standpoint, and a lot less disturbance on the overall land moving forward with the one access point. Currently, as shown, we would need to revise it slightly. There's a thousand-foot maximum requirement. I think this is a thousand and sixty feet. And so obviously, through final design, we would modify that and then make sure that we ran through the table that we've all become acquainted with this evening for proper, proper design. Uh, one thing I would point out is, we would propose a, the regulations require a cut slope, a three-to-one max cut slope. On the uphill side of that, proposed private road or driveway, we would actually propose that be two-to-one, and we would demonstrate that to the board as far as a waiver request and demonstration of why that's more appropriate in this case than a, a three-to-one. Uh, we have done test pits on site. We know that we have good sandy soils. They're highly transmissive. Uh, we do not have ledge concerns on site, so we are able to construct this without a large amount of earth disturbance or blasting requirements. So again, in, in recap, we will require a, a special exception from the zoning board, because we are proposing this driveway come across and provide access that's not on the project frontage, so we will file with the zoning board. But again, this is for four, proposed four, uh, single-family lots and nothing larger than that. Be happy to try and answer any questions the board has.
Questions? Does it's only four lots, you don't need a sister?
That's correct. Yep. And the applicant has been pretty diligent in working with the fire chief on that. At TRG, Hammerhead turnout was discussed, good location for that, which of course we know about. There was discussions about widening the flares into the proposed driveways to sort of provide a little more maneuverability on the proposed private road, which we're amenable to. And potentially look at good locations for maybe one pull-off access.
Yeah.
Um, which we're happy to do. I think there's a topographic spot right at the start of our curve.
Before the curve.
Yeah, where, where, uh, we zero out, where it would go from a cut to a fill, where I think it would be a great pull-off spot for that.
Questions?
I have some questions. I mean, the road loops into that property. Is, why do you, why don't you go down the neck? Is that, is there something there that? Why did you loop into that property rather than like go down the neck? Kind of, was it turn or?
Uh, topographic advantage. So essentially, we're able to run along the contour and basically come up the grade and loop down, you know, loop into that. That, we could shorten that loop, but it would require us to cut the slope more. And, um, you know, it, I know, not that aesthetics are the, the only thing, but it would look a lot better and have a lot less disturbance if we didn't have to cut that as much.
The top of the loop, if it goes, I mean, the back of the, back of that lot, um, three. It's not square. It's got an angle to it.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be possible to take that road and move it off of, it's kind of close to the house there. And there's a lot of property behind that. Would it, could that road be moved further to the right? And right at the, right at the very end, very end of that road.
Sure, yep.
It kind of goes very close to that house. Is there any reason it can't be moved further to the right, further, that way?
Yeah, and in fact, in final design, we would likely run it right along the.
Can you square off that rip behind that?
Yes, yeah. The only reason this is sort of cockeyed like that is wanted to keep this line the same length as this line. That makes it non-perpendicular to that existing. But if you'd like to see this just be square right across.
Yeah, we, we generally like rectangular is the general rule.
Yeah, not, not a problem.
And you're gonna move that road a little bit to the right, so it's, it gives a little more distance from that, that buildable area?
Yep.
I think that'd be better.
And that way, it doesn't bisect the buildable area either.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
So it appears that lots two, three, and four are anywhere from three hundred and fifty to five hundred feet location of the homes from the road, so.
Yes.
It probably won't be seen at all, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And lot one, of course, goes to a thousand feet.
Uh, yeah, it would be even further back.
Yeah, all right.
It's not on SALT. They really near SALT, probably. There's all that wetlands.
Yeah. Well, if they move that one back and get a nice view topographically of the wetlands, right?
Some of this design is actually dictated by wanting to be at the top of the slope.
Right, exactly.
For the views out for the southwest.
Less disturbance is better.
Yep.
See, or anything else. So you're not gonna put nineteen single-family homes in?
We're not proposing condos. We're not proposing a large subdivision. None of the above, no.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty weird.
It was a little comical to read that in bed at night and not really be able to comment, because I try not to comment on that stuff, but, it was a little wild, and then it really, really caught some people's attention, so.
It did.
Um, how, how high is the road? Private road?
Could be twenty feet.
There's only thirty foot right away, too, for a road like that.
Understood, yeah.
So I have some questions.
Do a trees, not a.
Big shock, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Under, in the regulation, uh, four point one point three parents five, which is driveways must be centered on the neck as much as possible, and the neck must be kept clear to maintain safety. The driveway in this doesn't utilize the neck, and there's not a driveway.
Right.
Centered off each property, which, um, the big question that I would have is, can you even get a, could you get a driveway permit for each of these lots?
Um, we could get driveway permits for each one of the lots. It, it would be a, a question of whether or not we really want to go in and scar the front of each one of these lots to get the driveway access. We, like I mentioned, uh, your zoning regulation actually requires that the driveway come off the frontage, and so we will have to go to the, the ZBA for that.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm like, when I look at the creation of these, they'd already be non-conforming lots right from the get-go, so you can't even create a conforming lot with it. And then when I move through the regulations, six point seven point one parents three, where you get into the land suitable for development with regard to steep slopes, that the access on it, I would want to know that the access is actually even reasonably applicable going into it. I just, I don't have a whole lot here that.
Yeah. Again, this is a, a design review. We fully anticipate providing full design plans for that.
And then, um, looking at seven point two parents two, which was, bear with me here. When I look in the performance standards for it, with the development of a private road, being it is classified as a private road, as well as the lot conformance, one of the requirements around it, when you look at lot configuration, is that you don't bisect the lots and cut them up, and this does exactly that. So it's not compliant with the regulation from a, a road standard?
So I think the thing to also consider here, when, uh, looking at that, is with very little modification, this could become a subdivision road. And so I think we should, when we come back to you with our final design, I'll make note of that, but I think it's important to realize that if, if we are to start considering this a real road, then we would use it for frontage, and we would have a much different design on our hands. So understanding that we are trying to limit the amount of area that we cut up, I think there's a a good effort here to make sure that we're reaching areas that we want to develop and avoid areas that I think we all want to avoid. So it's not a conservation subdivision, but in that spirit, I think we're sort of working with the best we can within the regulations.
Lot three and four have a lot of wetlands to the road, too, so.
Yep, and we have a driveway, we have a driveway design.
Yep.
That could work there and area ready. Could come right across our frontage and, and gain access to that area, so. Again, that's a sensitive area. We're trying to intentionally avoid it.
Right.
And then when I.
That's why I liked the road you've presented so far.
And then when I get into Article eleven, under our general design standards for subdivision, eleven point one, character of the land, eleven point one parents three, where is, where the reference to the driveway is specifically called out, eleven point two point one. It does not, when you look at lot shape, size, and layout, with the intent and purpose of the lot shape, size, and regulation, it, I, it's just really, it's not compliant to that. And eleven point two point one parents two, as well as parents three, based on my reading and interpretation, it doesn't need it.
So can you expound on that? Because our lot configuration is compliant.
So eleven point two, um, point one, parents one, intent and purpose for lot shape and size regulation, the intent of these regulations to, is to enhance and ensure consistency with the Barrington zoning ordinance and the following purposes, specifically under point one. The purpose of these lots and shapes is a manner that promotes clarity of ownership, access across free title land rather than easements, and to promote the convention and harmonious development of the land. Doesn't necessarily provide clear, um, the, the shape and design doesn't provide clear, necessarily clear ownership, because it requires an easement to cut across it, and it requires a driveway that bisects technically two and a half parcels, or we'll say two of the parcels of land.
So I would argue that the term bisect implies that you have some buildable area on one side and other buildable area on another. And this doesn't do that. In fact, it promotes access to buildable area in one congruent fashion on all of the lots. And I'm not saying that this is the final design. I think we've already discussed that we're certainly amenable to making things better. But just because you need a driveway easement doesn't automatically dictate that our lot configuration and design is not appropriate. And again, I would just point out that with minor modification, we could create lots around this area that it would look a lot more like a, a normal subdivision.
I'm, I'm just.
Public comment yet, Joe?
I'm just calling out, like, when I look at the way our regulations are written, these are the items that are addressed into it. And then when I look at eleven point two point one parents two, to prevent close proximity of narrow portions of the lot, portions of lots that will create a situation that reduces privacy and increases congestion overcrowding of the land. It, it's one of those, because of the way that the driveway cuts over there, I'm like, mm, that's up for interpretation. As well as the same thing around the house sites and the land. I just think it's one of those where it's, it's a little bit of a gray area.
I hear, I hear you, Andy, but to me, you know, they could have put the driveway up the, up, up the neck and access the back lot and the two side lots, then done the other lot down below separately. They could, they could have made it a driveway with three, with three lots and done, wasn't, weren't the bottom, was that, they could have done that with a separate driveway. This is trying to avoid the wetlands.
Also one access on the road.
I, I'm not saying that I don't necessarily think it's better. What I'm saying is, is like, there's a handful of areas here that I think actually would be waivers in our regulation and deviate from what our regulation actually says.
Yeah.
Which is, like, kind of the call-out here, is that we've. Which is, like, kind of the call-out here, is that we've got regulations, our job is to enforce the regulation.
Waivers, I guess.
And being it's a design review, or if we're using this as a design review, it should be clearly identified to them for that purpose, because it would not, I would argue it is not a complete application at this point.
Oh, I would agree with you on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the point of the design review.
Yeah.
But it, like, what came in is a subdivision application. I got it as an application, not as a design review, Noah.
But is that checked?
It should be checked.
Design review at the top, right in the front page, at the top.
Am I just missing it? I see the subdivision major.
Well, I assume it's there.
It is. I will.
No application.
He's trying to get a sense of the board.
Which I will sound on. How many people like the idea that's a small road instead of three roads onto, or three driveways?
Don't get me wrong, I think it's better.
It looks like a really nice way to do it.
Yeah.
It'd really be well shielded.
Yeah. There'll be fewer trees cut down, because you've got a 30-foot right of way instead of a 50-foot right.
You've got a curve that will block out, make a visual, visual buffer.
From the street, they won't see.
I, I agree that a driveway down the neck would be probably the most compliant, but there's issues with that. Site-specific issues with that. I kind of like the curve, it's gonna, you're not gonna be able to see anything, a lot of vegetation. I, I hear what you're saying, though, Andy, I hear what you're saying, but I think that this plan, give you feedback, I think this plan, I had questions why the road was the way it was.
Me, too.
Because it looks weird.
Yeah.
But, you know, getting into a little bit of the detail, start to understand the logic behind it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you guys know I don't get to do two-lot subdivisions, so I gotta be here with something odd, right?
So one of my. Really confused, though.
Yeah, I know.
The curve of the road takes advantage of the topography, right?
Agreed.
You know, the mod impact, cuts and fills a less, and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
So I guess, what, like, the question I had is where the driveway specifically, or road, whatever we want to call it, comes up through that, like, middle lot, lot two, I think, is what we're calling, you're calling it, lot three, 28-3?
Cross.
Right, but where it specifically bisects the lot.
Yeah, I asked why it didn't come on the next two.
And I, I know it's, it's for the purpose of frontage, but would it almost be cleaner if, if, oh, like, if there was a waiver on it to keep, to put the property line at the driveway and segregate off the wetlands? I, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know exactly, like, the approach to it. I think it's a waiver from the frontage requirement. It just, it just prevents you from having this driveway cut right through the middle of a lot, and a lot line that.
Talking about this area here?
No, the lot three, that one, yeah.
We're gonna move it.
Yeah, he's gonna move it up.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the, the frontage section, the road frontage section.
This here?
Yeah.
Well, and, and that's placed in that location because we can't have it this way, and we would require more of a 9.6 and a wetlands, so.
It, it's more just the, yeah, I'm looking at the, well, it's, what I'm looking at is the fact that you have a lot that is bisected by a road.
Right.
So you own frontage on both sides of a, of a driveway, or a road, or whatever we want to call it.
Yeah. I do understand that, but your bisected land is garbage.
Yeah. And that's why I'm, I'm just like, is there a way to clean it up?
But Selter, you say that.
That's, that's what we learned in school, anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to make it so it's less garbage that somebody owns.
I think he's saying what I said, you know, why isn't it going down the neck?
Yeah.
So we need some language to support that.
Okay. We can certainly accommodate that. Um, yeah, and through final design, we're happy to make these changes, and we may be able to even take some of the curse off from that section there. We made it longer, you know, to get our run out, but up in that section, we're actually able to design that at 5% currently. So we, we might be able to make that a little shorter, less impact when we do that. So, less impact on the lot, the way it's laid out, but also less construction impact.
I guess I'm less concerned, because a road right away going bisecting my property, so.
That's true.
Have a lot of traffic.
It works.
Well, yours was also established back in, like, 1930, so.
Any more comments before I open to the public comment? I'm opening to the public comment. Anybody like to speak to this? Come forward. You got three minutes?
Three minutes. All right.
Well.
That's fine, I'll make.
Give everybody three minutes, and we'll see where we are. No repeating, you know, there's no sense.
That's fine. Good evening, everybody.
Okay.
My name is Bill Durkin. I live at 354 Mary Hill. I'm a new resident of Barrington. My wife Darlene, back row in the middle, and we absolutely love it here. Absolutely enjoy being here. One question. I feel relieved now that you've explained there aren't 50 homes or condos or whatever, but my question is, you have 34 acres, four. You could ask the board, I'm happy to answer after that. 34 acres and four fairly small lots. Is there anything preventing further development later on?
You mean, could they be subdivided? I guess two of the lots are just over two acres, so they couldn't be. There's one at four acres and the other at eight-ish.
Right.
Suppose you could put a deed restriction?
No, no, Mike, let me, let me rephrase, just make it clear. There's 34 acres, there's only eight acres being used.
Well, 20 of it is water, wetlands.
That's, okay, I wasn't sure about that. So is there room for any further development other than the four lots?
Not as far as the board is concerned.
Yeah, if you look at the, you probably don't have this, but this is all back of the property, which would be.
Beautiful.
Also, per our regulations, any lot created after March of this past year can't be subdivided for a back lot, and that's.
That's lot eight, that's the biggest lot, so.
Yeah.
I mean, lot four.
You, you wouldn't be able to, well, it's, it's already got a.
Yeah. So they can't.
It's already a back lot, so.
Right.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else like to comment? Please come forward.
Shh. The clock guy.
Hi.
My name's Laura Gershman. I'm on a butter directly across the street. So, yeah, 137 Mary Hill. So a lot of my questions are answered by what has been said already, but I was wondering about the entrance to the private road. It, I was kind of unclear from the diagram in relation to our driveway where it was going to be.
Looked at that based on the letter you sent in, and I think they're about 100 feet off of the right boundary, and I think you are a little further to the left. So I think they'd be about, it's about 200 feet away from your driveway.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, it's on, and then the other one, the family begins with a T, I forget they are, they're actually facing the other lot, so they wouldn't be impacted either.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Christine Tronpak. We're at 101 Mary Hill Road. We're the red flag people. When we first found out about the development, it said, you know, big subdivision, and heard we called the town, and they had mentioned that Joe Falzone does these big developments, and he was like, he was gonna do the condos and all that, and all these people were telling us. And I'm very happy to find out that it's smaller. The only concern I have is our property is directly across, and the water drains directly into our property. There's two culverts, so I don't know how, just wanted to address that, to see if that's gonna make a.
They could show the culvert on the road at some point.
There's two spots where it comes right through underneath the road when.
Now, I know your lot kind of goes off at an angle, right?
Mm-hmm.
That, that part of your lot faces where the driveway would be, but your driveway is in the next lot, facing the other lot. So, does it go into your driveway?
No, it goes into our, there's, we own six acres down there into the land, and just don't want it to turn into, like, it already takes, you know, on a whole bunch of water. That was my only concern.
I'm wondering if there's a town culvert there or what.
There's two, like, it goes, the pipe goes right underneath the road, so I don't know.
Well, the developer could probably take a look and see, because those culvert may be relevant once the driveway goes in.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to put that down and apologize for the late night story.
Thank you very much. Any more comments? Anybody online?
Okay. If you're online and would like to have, speak for or against this application or have any questions, make public comment, this is your opportunity. Put yourself off mute, raise your hand, and I'll give you a moment to see if anybody wants to respond. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anybody that would like to speak for or against or have any questions about this for public comment.
In that case, I'll close the public comment. Any further questions on this application, this?
Just have a couple of follow-up comments.
Go ahead, please.
So she's right, there's two culvert crossings that come under the road, under her property. We would prepare a stormwater analysis. There's likely going to be a small treatment system.
Oh, okay.
To capture flow, detain it, you know, reduce rates and volumes before going back into the wetland, so we're not increasing flow onto.
Offsite.
Onto their property, that's right.
Yeah. Regulations kind of require.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any more comments by the board? You ready to close design review?
Yeah, I think we have what we need tonight, and we'll go into final design.
Okay. I'll make the motion to close the design review on this.
Second.
Go call.
Bye-bye.
Happy yellow eye.
Just your eye.
Yellow eye.
Did you look at the time? Um. Um. Well, I see it's adjourned. Before we do adjourn, before we adjourn, anybody have any, any.
Public meeting, conversation, job, hi, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, quick comment.
Quick comment by Ron.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is.
What is the best way to learn?
Read, just read.
Hours and hours this week looking at this trend. I'm gonna figure it out.
Oh, I can find my notes.
Good, said Sunday night, sitting at the table in the house, going through my wife's and my son's bed, and I'm sitting here with all the plans.
Oh, I don't even get one of those.
I've got one that we, you know, we didn't have a lot of information for. How is that?
Is there one?
Yeah, if you don't need it, I'll return it.
Meeting that, you know what I mean?
You know what I did with a lot of these big ones?
It doesn't give you a driveway, you don't know where the driveway is.
But the, the site itself did not look to be three to one.
I think it's five, eight.
You can't talk about.
Nope, we're gonna. Do you have anything else to?
Yeah. Just to clarify that after.
Before we adjourn, Ron had a comment.
Real quick, we, on the, the driveway standards and stuff like that, I'll send you a thing. It says two lots for driveways, which is inconsistent with our three lot. We changed it to three lots, but the, the preferred things, the notes that says two, so we need to correct that.
Okay.
I'll send you a thing.
Perfect, thank you.
The only other item I had is, we had talked a bit about, like, I, in my note that I included with zoning amendments, I had a conversation about subdivision regulations, and the plan was to talk about that, I believe, at the 17th, on the 17th meeting, is that correct?
I was trying to have it on the 19th as well.
Sorry, 19th.
So just to give a little bit of what we're doing on the 19th, the, I don't know what the official title of the subcommittee is, the implementation plan, subcommittee proposed several zoning amendments for conservation subdivisions, which are not finalized, but will be for the 19th, and I know that you had sent me some as well.
Yep.
And so I know we're gonna discuss that, and the town engineer was supposed is working on a couple of things as well. So if you have things you want to add that you don't think you can get to me in the next week or so, and I'll check in with him, we can try to do it in a December meeting. I don't know, work session meeting, that might be better then, I don't know.
And then push back the first public one, you see?
So, no, this first, sorry, for subdivision regulations, I'm combining them, too, I'm sorry. A long time.
Division, we just have to notice.
So you just have to do a 10-day notice. You can amend your subdivision regulations at any time. Just have to give the proper notice. It doesn't have to be town vote or anything like that. I was trying to have it done for the 19th, for the couple of things that the road agent, as well as the fire chief, had asked, and then myself as staff, a lot of the, you know, the two subdivision amendments that came through, we've been questioned a lot, what is a field change, what is not a field change, so something a little bit more concrete, so that we have something to point to, have more teeth in it. So I was adding that to it as well. But if there's other things you want to discuss, we may want to talk about it, but also, you know, on the implementation plan, they're gonna be changing some of, in addition to zoning, it'll also bleed through for subdivision regulations if and when those pass town vote.
Is it a field change?
Wouldn't said it had to jog at each of the.
Right, and you.
And then you.
Straight line.
Foundation, and it's a straight line.
Yeah.
It's a field change.
Sure.
If I ask for a campground, I put a cattle ranch in.
So, I think that's what, well, we can try for the 19th, but I can get a better answer for everybody tomorrow. Subdivision.
I know.
League Department will change.
Jog is a field change? No jog is a field change?
Apparently.
Apparently, but the owner told me.
The lawyer said.
I mean, I think if we.
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Napa.
Happy yellow eye.
I motioned.
Scott.
All right.
Oh, yeah, give Scott.